Let's call this meeting to order. Would everyone please join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call Mr. Tucker.
Here, Lord.
Here.
Dr. Connor.
Here.
Dr. Short.
Here.
Dr. Collins.
Here.
Dr. Parker.
Here.
And Sullivan.
Here. Thank you, Mrs. Tucker. I believe everyone, every board member, has a copy of our last board meeting minutes. Will there be any corrections or additions to this? And if not, may I get a motion to have them accepted? This is a motion. Motion trustee Connor.
Second.
Second trustee, you called it, call the favor.
Aye.
Aye. Gary, thank you. And at this time, before we go into our general public, we have with us this evening the Dory Curts from Development Corporation. Good evening.
Hello, Mayor LaPorte, how are you?
Not too bad.
I'm trying to get organized on my paperwork here.
I was going to say, do you need a few more minutes?
A second would be great.
A second would be great. Well, that's not a problem.
And Eric's going to put up an easel.
Okay.
That we can use for the second part of our presentation.
Good.
Can we put it behind you?
You sure can.
Good.
There's not a problem there.
Yeah, I'll come up here.
Okay then.
Good evening, thank you very much for having the Development Corporation here tonight to talk about Empire Zones and some other issues of interest, I think, to the village board and to your staff that we'd like to talk about tonight. Hard to believe it's September and it's 93 degrees outside, but I can see by everybody's pan that they've been enjoying the day. So I'm going to start by talking about the Empire Zone. I have a handout here. Give me here the longest, so you get the next one.
Uh huh.
I've given here as long as I have, I think.
Yeah, I took some time off in between.
Oh, did you? Oh, that must not be when I was coming. One of the most exciting things that is going on in economic development in New York State are Empire Zones. And if you leave the Press Republican tomorrow, you will see the announcement of the city of Plattsburgh's Empire Zone being expanded to the Bank of Road Industrial Park, which we operate upon in the town of Plattsburgh, Bank of Road. The governor has announced it and we're pretty excited about that. And I should have left myself one to read. Oh, good. I wanted to tell you a little bit about Empire Zones. These are probably the most powerful economic development tool the state has or has ever had. It has the potential of providing to businesses essentially tax-free zones. Pretty exciting stuff. Empire Zones started out as economic development zones, and they've been around for about 10 years. In the middle 90s, there were some enhancements to the Empire Zones, the economic development zones as they were called then. And at that time, the city of Plattsburgh worked with the Development Corporation to expand the economic development zone into our park in Plattsburgh. At the same time, Clinton County was putting together a zone. The Clinton County zone was given to the county so that it could deal well with, or in a better way, with the closure of Air Force Base. And the Clinton County zone is basically at the former Air Force Base, but starting in March of 2001, we asked that the Champlain Industrial Park be included because it can be any place in the county. It just wasn't any, it was just in one place. But they had 80 acres that they weren't using, they had additional space, which was in wetlands areas, areas that really weren't productive for business. So we asked that the Champlain Industrial Park be designated. And we also, at the same time, worked with the folks at Gateway Industrial Park in Bequintown, which is being developed by Will and Dave Meath. And, well, you didn't think you were going to have anything to do with this today, but with Bill Conroy and Dave Meath. And at that time, in March of 2001, we put that application together. So this is Clinton County Empire Zone. They're looking at doing two subzones, one at Gateway and one here. And we received notification today that they're at the very final stages of that approval. And Bruce Stedman, who is the administrator of the zone, let me know by fax today that they expect to be contacting you because they need your approval to say yes when you want to sign the term. I outlined for you, there are two tiers of benefits. Tier one, pretty easy to get. There are wage tax credits, which means if you hire targeted workers or you hire people in New York State who are looking for jobs and don't bring them from someplace else, that the employer gets a credit. And it can be, it's $750 for just any employee, $1,500 for a targeted employee. Those are the people who are out of work and looking for work through the state income program. There, there's an investment tax credit for every dollar that you put into a business. You can get credits on your investment. Those are taken under New York State income taxes. There's a capital tax credit, also an employment tax credit, which helps you underprivileged tax in the state of New York. So these all help employers be able to do business more cheaply in New York State. A big, and one of the reasons that we were very interested in having Empire Zone are lower electric bills. NICE Act will knock on 4 cents a kilowatt hour for a business that goes into the Empire Zone. All new load. So if I have a tenant where my building number nine is, and my tenant moves out and have a new tenant, got new tenant, all their electricity is new load. And so they will be able to not pay a point or a cent that's paid about $4.00, a kilowatt. Pretty exciting, pretty attractive. And those are tier one benefits, very easy to get. Almost all of the commercial and industrial property in the city of Plattsburgh is in the Empire Zone, for example. There are some enhanced benefits that we've got. And these have just come into play in the last two years. And these are the really big guns. There's a potential property tax exemption, which means if you are a certified business and you meet the tests, you pay your property taxes to the village, to the town, to the county, to the school district. And based on growth of your employees and growth of your business and your investment in New York State, you may get almost all of your money refunded to you by the state. What's good about this? You get all your money. School districts gets all its money. There's no taxes, not an abatement program. It is, you pay your taxes to the taxing jurisdiction, and you apply to the state for you. And refund comes from the state. And it comes in a tenure program. It comes in time for you to pay the next tax the next time. That's the way it's sort of set up. So in a 10-year period, you're going to pay the taxes the first time, you're going to get the rebate, or one would expect to be able to use that rebate to pay your taxes. The next time, you get it from the state. So it has the effect, a 10-year program of giving you a tax exemption or up to a full tax exemption.
That's going to be exactly.
Why does everybody want to be in the Empire Zone? That's part of the reason. There's a sales tax reduction for certified businesses. The state waives the sales tax they would take on tangible personal property and services. The county doesn't waive, some counties in the state do waive, but Clinton County has chosen not to waive. I'll give you an example. The Development Corporation got certified as an Empire Zone business. And so we're about to go to bid on a project to enhance one of our buildings that's in the town of Plattsburgh. And Eric was just calling me today and said, is this a tax-abated project? And I said, no. But the sales tax on all of the stuff that is being done as part of the project, which is probably around $250,000, we only have to pay 3% tax in that set. So this way, again, the county's not negatively impacted or affected by jurisdictions. Pretty exciting. And there's a tax credit against business-related income, and it can be up to 100% for 10 years. So why is this important? I think it's going to be difficult in New York State to attract large amounts of investment without having this program in place and being able to say, yes, we have an Empire Zone. It's the very second question that I get. First question is, do you have public law and public service? Yes. Second question is, is there Empire Zone? Third question has to do with, which should be asked by the good folks, all sorts of things. Key questions. The highest level of benefits in this program go to new investors in the state and encourage New York State residencies. Part of the reason the state wants to do that. They want to bring investment from outside, new money into the state, new money to develop New York State. And so some of the benefits are given on the New York State income tax return. If you did your own income tax return this year, there were some questions about Empire Zones as you came to them, even if you did them on TurboTax. And on TurboTax, it came up online and said, are you going to take this benefit in the Empire Zone? So it encourages people who might live outside the state to be absentee landlords, actually become taxpayers of the state. So that's what they're going to do. The state is actively marketing this both globally and nationally. And it makes those taxing jurisdictions, like you, whole. You're not asking to give up everything. You're going to get all your tax money, and the state will then come in and do it. So we made application on March 15th of 2001 to zone. So I want to tell you a little bit about, there are two zones in the county, the county and the city of Plattsburgh Zone. The city zone is technically more difficult to designate because you have to meet some standards that have to do with census tracts and low income that the city had to meet when they started their Empire Zone in 1988. And the city zone, you have to be, quote, "a nearby area." So it was determined that Gateway was not a nearby area, and Bequintown, and neither was Champlain. So the decision was made to go to Clinton County Zone. Bruce Stedman, who's on the park staff, is the administrator of the zone, and he's being available pretty at 561-0232 on a regular basis. There is one member of the Clinton County Empire Zone who resides in the northern tier. That's Chris Ringo, works for Champlain Telephone. So your area is represented on that Clinton County Empire Zone. And so what did we ask for and what did we get? Well, we asked for, to start, that we wanted the whole hundred something acres to be in the zone. What did we get? We got 25 acres. But the regulations in the Empire Zone have been set up such that you can now footprint buildings and, and bring my map, I do have a map. 25 acres is 1,089,000 square feet. So essentially, we are going to be permitted to, inside the parameters of the Champlain Industrial Park, to build up to 1 million square feet, which can be footprinted. Gateway got 10 acres, which is, they got 130,000 square feet, which actually is a lot of space. So we think that we were pleased with that number because it allows us to basically build out the industrial park over time and still be sure that we'll be able to give Empire Zone credits and Empire Zone designation to anybody who wants to go there. And we'll just modify what the building looks like, we put a schematic together. So what comes next? I understand for Bruce Stedman today that they expect that they will have all of their approvals from the state within a couple of weeks. They then have to do a couple of things. They have to approach the town of Plattsburgh, which has already been formally agreed, these are good neighbors, to take the 25 acres over the year out of the town of Plattsburgh, which is currently designated, and to give it to the village of Champlain. So they have to pass a resolution to that effect. They also are taking the 10 acres that are going to Gateway out of the town of Plattsburgh and the town of New York to Champlain. Then the village of Champlain will be asked to accept the designation, and then Clinton County Legislature will approve all of that. So I thought I'd tell you a little bit about what we're doing. We're working with two pretty hot prospects for new buildings for Champlain Industrial Park. One is a Montreal-based company wishing to construct its own distribution facility. And the other's a national logistics company with local expansion. So they have site selection first, and in town on Friday, Bob got him in. Because not only were we showing him Champlain Industrial Park, we were showing him other areas in the town of Champlain, and the village of Champlain. Bob was nice enough to meet with Brian Dowell from our staff and to show him some of the other spots that were kind of large enough for the facility. I think they came to the conclusion, I want to be in the village. This is somebody we've worked with over a couple of years, and he represents a national company, he's from Pittsburgh. And so he came up here to take some pictures of what was going to be. So we're pleased about that. The second thing I want to talk about, and Eric Day from ADA is here with me, and he can answer technical questions. But we really wanted to talk a little bit about something else that has sort of come up in the last week. It has to do with the town of Champlain, Water District, the village of Champlain, the Development Corporation, and some new development that's in the town. So I really thank you for the opportunity to have a chance to talk with you about something whom you've only heard about last week. As we understand it, there's interest on the part of the town of Champlain to develop a water district to serve areas east of Champlain Industrial Park. And in addition, the village has considered extending its water lines in Champlain, which were previously extended in part in a significant cost by an ADA grant and TDC, with the village not having to pay any of those expenses. Apparently, for many months, the idea of TDC providing an easement across this property has been widely discussed with everybody but us. So we were able in the last week to kind of get into the discussion. We need to tell you a little bit about how, what our plans are and where we've been. Can I, Chuck, can I get behind you if you don't mind? Okay. I'm just going to orient you a little bit to the site. This is where the lot is down here. This is the Development Corporation's building where Bariatrix is, at the corner of Hawkehead Drive, building number nine. This is the Champlain National Bank site, and this is the site where Parker is building. This is the old railroad right of way right behind our property. And there's a lot of about five acres, which usually referred to as Lot 1 on most of our maps, that extends up to the ravine. This is where the ravine that crosses Hawkehead Drive goes back behind the Champlain, Buffalo Champlain, or Danza's Inn.
Right, or Danza's Inn.
So we have, we have worked here with this building, which we built, I think, in 1967. And we've always tried, we've always marketed the site as one that's expandable. And we always knew that there were some complications in expanding it, but the way the Champlain Industrial Park lays out, there are really only a couple of sites because of where the ravine is and where the potential crossings are that are very large. One is at the northern terminus of Hawkehead Drive at Prospect Hill on the east side of the road. One is across the ravine and a buddy of the school property, where we've just in the last year gotten approval to take a road across the ravine and extend the water there under our building, and the other is here. Almost all the sites on the other side of the street are too narrow because they kind of go up the hill before they have weapons in the back to ask for builders like this. So we've always resisted selling this to just an unaffiliated developer. For example, Ballen wanted to buy the site and had them go across the street because we really thought we wanted to. Our tenant here has talked with us and others about expanding their use, but we've actually laid out a building that we're going to own here. We always thought that if we did that, that we would have to move the force main, which comes here from the school, which the school owns, the force main and the easement. It's not a village, I pronounced that right, Bob?
Yes.
It's owned by...
Just the water station, at the water station.
At the water station, which is right here, there's a small easement area that the village owns. But the force main is owned by the school, and it's in property that we own. We acquired that easement when we bought the property. So we are not predisposed to allow, not only have a sewer force main in this location, but also a water line, if indeed we're going to have to move it later. We've always spent, already spent considerable money on the village, extending the village line, and we don't know what kind of needs we're going to have. So we've talked to Bob in the last week about potential ways that we might be able to allow that to be there, including a tunnel situation, which we've done before, and the goal was to contract it. But we really don't know what kind of people we need, special heavy-duty floors, will the tunnel work? So our position in all of this is that we are willing to offer the village an easement, but it's profit's not going to be here. We would be open to easements that would go along here and come back here to serve the needs to ease, or along here and either come to the town line, which is every 11, or even going across our property to the bank's property. Eric is here. So I think it's important for us to say that, I had somebody call me today from the town, discouraging, said, well, I understand you won't give an easement. And I said, well, no. We're happy, we have two or three different scenarios that we'd be happy to work, we want to be supported, but we can't put ourselves in a position after we've spent an enormous sum of money to do this, and we did everything the village asked us to do, even when it was more expensive than our original plan, to further make this more expensive to develop. So Eric's here, and he's going to outline for you, and this is, for those of you who didn't get the last page, this is what I was trying to attach. I do have one, I think. Would you get this one? Would you hand this to... I have one. Eric's going to review for you options which we think you have, which will address your concerns and...
What we did in the sheet here...
Well, you want me, I'll be up here and, I'll be up here.
Do you like the board?
Yeah, okay.
Okay. I outlined briefly three different options on the plan, starting with, we'll run right down through them quickly here. Option one was...
That's the purple one.
The purple line, Dory's shown now, that runs across the northern part of Lot Number 1, along with the bounds of the wetland in an easement that would be granted by TDC. And then either on Parker's land or on TDC property, south, then extend eventually over to the Parker building. What I did was quickly scale off length of pipe that would be required to do that and multiplied, I carried through a cost of $30 linear foot on all of each of the three options.
So if the cost is less than that...
If it's less, they're all less. If it's more, they're all more. It's, that'll shake out in the end. At the length of 1,520 linear feet, you're looking at a cost of $45,600. That's total, that's total project cost, not necessarily village cost, but total cost borne by whatever you would do and whatever the owner of Parker would do. What I did was break out of that number. The two numbers for all of these options don't add together to make the total cost, but the cost of the village line, which is only 420 feet, which is that, you know, it's just straight across the top, you hit the village line.
You hit the village line, right, yeah.
At the $30 a foot, it's giving that number 1,2600. Option two is the railroad bed right of way, which is not, not, obviously, as Dory explained, the way we would like to do it, but for comparison's sake, we scaled off 975 feet of pipe at that cost, giving you, giving you a cost, the, again, the cost of the village at 375 feet, which is the length of pipe from the Hawkehead Drive over to the village line, basically the same distance, basically the same cost. The third option was broken out in two different fashions, but total linear footage of pipe from the end of the existing line on Hawkehead Drive, south along Hawkehead Drive to 11, across, across in front of the bank, and then back up to the building, was 1,431 linear feet, shorter than option one. It did, in that situation, option 3A, it did extend the length of pipe, depending on how the village interprets it, by...
This is, there's several places that are the town line in this case. So 3A is...
3A is over to the bank.
All the way to here. 3B is just in town. This would allow the town to serve the other side of the 11 fairly well, and then to come across here, and it doesn't change very much at all the cost for...
Yeah, the length of pipe on Parker's property or on the bank property is basically the same, no matter, no matter what route it takes. What it comes down to was just the difference of pipe on Hawkehead.
So our position here is that, you know, we want, we think development to the east is good. We understand that you have been supportive of the towns wanting to expand to that area, and we are willing to give various easements to make that happen. And we're happy to have opportunities to show you where we are and kind of explain to you our position, and to the folks who are watching on TV, to give us a call if you need to know any more about what we plan to do here. If there are any questions, we're happy to answer them. Eric did a really good job of putting together some of the options here. So you could really look at the kind of things that can work here and realize that there's lots of ways, just in this cap.
Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Because we, as a small village, have to look at the cost of this that we have to bear to get it to the town line. That's always a concern, okay?
Always a concern.
With a small business, it's always a concern. I want to thank you very much for your presentation this evening. The thing of it is that at this time, I really need to close the meeting and go to a public hearing. And then we could come back and if there's any other questions. We have a public hearing scheduled for 7 o'clock on our local...
We're happy to wait around. Doesn't look like there's going to be a lot of competition at the public hearing, so I'll be happy to...
Right, I just, and I'm sorry, but do I need a motion to close the regular session? May I get a motion to close the regular session and go into public hearing? Motion by Trustee Connor.
Second.
Second, Trustee McColdy. All in favor?
Aye.
We are here this evening, a public hearing on our local law number two, wellhead protection law of the Village of Champlain. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address this? Well, at this time I'd like to see if I could have a motion to go back into regular session.
Come on.
Motion, Trustee Connor, second, Trustee Short. All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, could I have a motion to have local law number two? How would we want to-
Pass local law number two.
Right.
Pass the second.
A motion to pass local law number two.
Come on.
Motion by Trustee Connor.
Second.
Second, Trustee McColdy. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you. This was up for public, for everybody to review. Now, back to Edory. Right? No, no, I, I, I just did a bit of motion. I'm very glad that you came this evening, because that was something that I want to say and I really didn't want to leave, okay? Because I, I was kind of concerned about the presentation on the Empire Zone. You and I had spoke at length on it at one time, right in this very office.
Yep.
I tried to pass on information to the board members, but it's always better to have it presented by the person that, you know, is making the application actually initially.
We think that there are no neighbors.
I, in what's your presentation this evening, you know, I thought it was a win-win situation when you and I spoke. Does anybody have anything that they would like to ask Edory or Eric or anybody that's here at this time?
I'm just glad to hear that these four points, 1 million, 89,000 is enough actual building space to cover our park, whatever, 25 acres of patio.
We were, we were concerned, but we have worked closely with Empire State Development and his footprint approaches has been utilized in Essendon as well, and so we really think it's going to look fine for us. Eric put together-
And I put together a map that Edory referenced earlier. It allows for a full build out of the park with buildings, so.
Including the phase that's crossed the ravine that went into the school. So, Matt, we are excited about it.
And again, I think there's things that are going to be happening in the future. And about your easement and Mr. Connors and Mr. McColdy are on the water and sewer committee. Information that you've given will help us to try and make some decision on what we need to do as a village to try and help the town.
I think everybody knows that public water is an asset for fire protection, for hygiene, for all kinds of things. And we, we know that, I mean, it's something that we've spent a fair portion of money invested. We also know that it makes the community more attractive, but I think that's a little positive. So I commend you on your willingness to go the extra mile for the town machine.
Yeah, because in the, in the long run, in town and in the village and everything, I believe that we should both be in it for the long haul. Again, again, it's like anything else that comes out of, out of development and what have you, is the dollar sign, is the dollar sign. And I think probably with your presentation this evening, it gives us an avenue that, you know, we have more understanding, but that's all.
Yeah, can we leave this part with them?
Yeah, I was thinking, you need that map to perfect, so numbers are different. Yeah.
That, that would be nice if we could keep-
It's yours.
Data. No other questions or comments, Mr. Sullivan?
Well, we work with Bob a lot.
Right.
He was so nice on Friday with our site selection question, on very short notice, after the person arrived at our office. He had some other interests and so we called Bob and he came up in about half an hour and Bob was very helpful in explaining where water was, where sewer was, what was available, beyond our village.
That was an absolute requirement at this point.
Absolutely. National companies want water, so.
Oh, it's got to be attracted, it has to be, yes. And again, I want to thank you very much for your time this evening, both of you.
I'm going to leave my cards with everybody, so you can know how to get these.
Now, does this whole thing stay here?
I think you have my number.
I think you want some.
I always probably like to take the easel with me.
The easel is mine.
This, this is our question, eh?
Yeah, you can keep that.
Okay, then, thank you.
I had a book with a name on it.
Thank you.
Easels get left place.
We almost got it. We almost got it.
We tried.
Oh, boy. I thought we, oh.
We tried.
We gave them and you told them.
We were just having a discussion this morning about we lost easels. Somebody left somewhere.
Thank you very much for that. And we're, I'm happy to come, I'm, I'm a neighbor, I'm just in Jay-Z, so six-star meetings are good for me because I get home at a, at a reasonable hour and I can come here before dinner, so.
Well, thank you very much for the information this evening.
If you have any questions regarding the technical stuff, dimensions and then how to put what I've got on paper here in. Yeah, I'll give you a card out here, I'll drop it off. Feel free to call anytime.
Thank you very much. You're welcome.
I gotta get my purse.
Did you have your purse?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Bye now. How was your evening? At this time, we're open to the public. Apparently there doesn't seem to be anybody that would like to address the board at this Bob approached me about schooling in Lake Classic. If, if none of the board knows, my, my thought process for schooling is we can't get enough of it. There's a three-day course that's going to be in Lake Classic, October 15th through the 18th, and the total sum of that, it will be around $750. I've spoke with Ms. Dawson and she's saying that the funds are there for the education. So at this time, I would probably like to see if anybody would entertain a motion to send Mr. Sullivan to this school in Lake Classic, October 15th through the 18th for the summer, but approximately $750.
Motion.
Motion made by Trustee Short.
Second.
Second, Trustee McColdy. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carried. As probably you've seen in some of Superintendent Sullivan's report, we had some problems at our wastewater treatment plant, which are, which are resolved as of now. But I think you all have copies of a purchase requisition, there should be three of them. Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You're welcome. The compressor head destroyed itself at the wastewater treatment plant and the emergency purchase was, was $1,350. And apparently there's a co-palmer primary filters that go with that, they give a price of $78 each with that purchase, right? Must be $156, $156. And he has another requisition in here, as you know, we have had our generator, it has been on site. He's asking for a 96-inch wide door to address the building.
It's going to be an internal building structure inside the building, it's going to be fire rated, so if something, I mean, it uses-
Okay, 90-minute fire rate door.
It's a natural gas-driven engine.
Okay.
So, just to have a-
And they, they call that, while it's 90 minutes, it's still two hours, they consider it two hours. Right. And all of his accounts, there's money in all of his accounts for these.
Well, this is a specified item.
All right.
Budgeted item.
Right. So we've got total, total purchase requisitions of $2,494. At this time, I would like to have somebody entertain a motion that we approve these purchase requisitions.
Come on.
Motion by Trustee Connor, second, Trustee Short. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, motion carried. I probably should be a little bit better prepared and I probably will for next month's meeting, but at this time, that's all I have for Mayor's report. Report of trustees. Trustee Connor.
Uh, nothing.
Okay, thank you very much, Trustee Connor. Uh, Trustee Short.
I have nothing at this time.
Thank you very much, Trustee Short. Trustee McColdy.
I have a few things. This mail here from Steve Bowman, safety training has proven to help, prove employees to information to reduce personal injuries and property damage. It is my intent to conduct safety training twice a month. It says our next scheduled safety training will be conducted during the week of, uh, 2 September 2002. Additional training will follow on, on an every other week schedule. Please provide time in the job schedule where we can accomplish this training. All right? Is this going to be put into a schedule or it'll be able to do this?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we do give them time for the safety training, okay?
We're talking about probably, you know, the city, probably kind of, want to give them that.
Yeah. Yeah. It's not a little bit. That's one thing. Well, I, I really don't want to bring it up, but yet I do the BMX park. Maybe, Bob, you can fill us in as to what the insurance company told you and then we can tell everyone what the, what Kim wrote in her email about the zone.
Uh, I called my former, he checked with the people who insure us. We don't have regular municipal-style carriers. There are carriers that I just designed to be municipal carriers, quite a bit more expensive. If we went the route of taking, having municipal carriers, we perhaps could get the insurance quite a bit cheaper. Or not cheaper, I can't say cheaper, I'm saying the wrong word. It would cost us a lot more money for our initial insurance, but we could be covered for being a park. I'm talking eight, nine thousand dollars a year more for this different carrier. The carriers we have now, I have no interest whatsoever in insuring BMX park. If they were to give us any coverage at all, it would only be for bystanders, not participants using the park. That's if some kid went off the file or landed on somebody else or something, then he would be given, deserved, he would, he would be covered. That would cost us between 35 and 5,000. Bear in mind that as long as this park exists, this insurance policy will exist, yearly things.
Yep.
So that's where we stand on it. It's not a very nice position, it's, we had a lot, we had a lot of conversations. He's, Curtis is really a proponent of, you know, giving kids a thing to do and stuff and this really is so, so counterproductive, it's pathetic.
So we're saying that a municipal carrier could probably give this to us for $9,000 a year?
Well, yeah, you know, it wouldn't cost us any great amount of money for that individual coverage, because you would have to have a whole village covered, so you're not, it would end up being a questionable.
Oh, so it's, we're just not insuring that whole park, we're insuring the whole village?
You would have to, you would have to change your entire-
Insurance policy.
Insurance policy.
Right.
So it doesn't, it doesn't work.
Thanks.
So what Bob was saying is the current insurance that we have does not need this. So if we wanted to have this done, we would have to go to a different insurance carrier and the premiums would be between eight and nine thousand dollars more a year. Not necessarily just the park, but this insurance carrier's premiums would be that much more expensive to encompass the BMX. And then apparently, I, I gather that there may be a zoning issue.
There would be a zoning issue because that's an R1 district. It may be a time to look at rezoning those pieces of land, but I don't, that's your issue, not, not mine, codes ops are another. So, you know, no more structures can be built, no buildings, no houses. Those things that constitute an R1 area are basically gone. Same thing in the CC area of the village.
Right.
That we may want to address that in India's-
In the zoning that?
Next meeting.
Right, I think, yeah. So what, what we're seeing at this time, I think what Francis is trying to get at is at this time, this BMX park is not looking, not looking very good, but I'm not to say that it isn't going to happen because there's other options, but we need to go, we need to do more investigating before- we need to do more investigating before there can actually be a decision made on it. Just to let anybody that's watching out there know we are working on this. And as I spoke to the young individuals the first time, I knew insurance was gonna be a real problem with it. The liability. But we will continue working on it.
There are other options, I think, out there. I don't know. I'm gonna try to look into one here that I, I was searching over the internet and a place, I don't know if you're familiar with the NRPA, which is a recreation agency and public agency. And if you belong to this agency, then you can be insured. And I'll have to check into that as far as, you know. All, who is insured? It says all registered participants, coaches, trainers, and managers up to the age of seventy. So they give a list and I'll have to check on this a little more and see if we could possibly go into something.
Is this individuals or is this a municipality?
This is, this is insurance for recreation agencies.
Right.
It all, it all depends on how they describe it. So I'll check into that. That may be one possibility. I think we have to check all avenues. The insurance I knew was gonna be something, the liability, that was my concern. And I guess we all knew that. And I did travel the internet quite a bit on the BMX park issue and and we're not the only ones with this problem. I mean, it's, everybody has the same issue as the liability issue. I had quite a few instances on, on the internet where they mentioned that the city is fighting with so-and-so because of a BMX related accident. So we need to make sure that we cover ourselves there before we actually make something and get ourselves in the hot water here. Right?
Aside from that, the grant application has gone in.
Yeah, the grant application has gone in, like you said. So I don't think we should stop that at this time. I think we need to do some further investigating. Oh, there was another letter here from Steve Bowman on safety inspections.
Yeah.
And he wanted to add lift stations and water storage tanks and loading docks and inspection schedule on an annual basis. Is that, is that something that we should do?
It's practical.
It is practical? And we'll have time in the schedule to do that?
I guess we'll have to make it. I think we'll do that during the pandemic.
Is it important, is it important that we do it? I guess. It's my question. Does it serve any value?
It will serve some value because, well, it's like the lift stations, are we doing anything that's a little weird? I don't think so. I think if we critique each other, we might be able to find something or not find something. It's quite out the reality. Cooperation is pretty safe now.
I think this is important that we have safety training. Not like just, you know, required to, but it's, you know, it's a good thing to do to keep our own people from being injured on the job. But I don't wanna have forward it done, you know, and somebody think that-
There's a point where you have to break it off.
That's right. I think that this is the only thing that the village is gonna do is train on safety and nothing else. But you need to have that in front of their mind. It should be, should come natural to them after a while.
It becomes part of your job.
It should be part of your job and they shouldn't have to think about it. It should automatically happen. And that's, I think, where we we have to make it happen that way so that they're, they're thinking safe when they go in there. When they, when they shut something off to work on it, they shut it off so that it's not gonna start. And they check that it's not gonna start before they start working.
Could be prevent, maybe it's too-
Yeah, let me just say, we've had a couple of close calls. You probably haven't heard of, of them because you haven't been at the YF in two months, but the last few months, we had some real close calls with steam. And I think I mentioned one to you. Couple of them, one of them, someone ended up going to the burn center in Syracuse from Shazee. They had burned in good shape because someone not hold the valve all the way, which was part of a lockout procedure. It's something we really need to take seriously. We will be held liable if OSHA or anyone comes in to investigate an accident and finds out that we, we were not following procedure.
Correct.
Okay? So that it's important that the procedures are laid down and the guys know that it's important to do it the right way. And I think that will probably prevent ninety-nine percent of the accidents. And like I said, it will become normal for them to, to work safely after a while. It's to get, it's to get them to that point.
The second nature.
That's right.
Right.
Yeah. We had a meeting on this trustee McCallie one afternoon and yes, I I felt, I had the same kind of concerns as trustee Connor. Yes, we need to do it. But we don't wanna be ridiculous when we do it either. That's the thing. And yes, safety should be number one. I agree with that. That was my only concern. You spoke about it just a few minutes ago. And that was my concern. I think we are on the right track. As this all develops and conspires as we, as we come along, we will be getting a report, a quarterly report for the board to review. I'm sure that will be in there since I more or less volunteered to be on the on the safety committee, being I think the mayor should, whoever the mayor may be. Yes, we need to take this serious, very serious. That's all I just said. Would there be anything else trustee McCallie?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Report of trustee Carter.
May I talk? We need to be able to read the loan expenditure reports for the month of August because the doctor did this two. And then we had an exception. We did some reading here. The proof to take money from the fund balance to do that payment. Whether the official transfer, whatever done, but we didn't have it in fact in mind. I'd like to throw up figures and then someone make a motion for everything. I have another minute and I can be there. The total cost of doing eat, oak, and official lane is fifty-seven thousand nine forty-four twenty. Of that seventeen thousand one hundred dollars of budgeted chips. So when I was like, I'd like a motion stating that the old transfer forty thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars from the fund balance to eight fifty-one ten point four, carve that over. And then we'll take from eight fifty-one ten point four one, that shows a seventeen thousand one hundred dollar in that account to the eight fifty-one ten point four, the account which is the actual payment account. So we zero that out from the just account and then we'll carve down the second fifty-one ten point four. Any other motions about that?
Motion. Motion trustee Al Connor.
Second.
Second trustee Short. All in favor? Aye. Motion carried.
One other item. I spoke with the mayor about this today. It's kind of a unusual situation, I guess. Normally, I'd only budget for the office staff to go through the NITE com contest, which is once a year in September. We're always told to budget every other year, like two or three years ago. But last year was the year that it was supposed to go. Donna had just started to kind of be doing. I love that one. We have capable years in two weeks. We did not budget for it. I asked the mayor here if we could just bring it up to maybe give them a consideration. We'd be taking to send Donna to it this year. There's no money in the budget. We would have to cover some of them. State of the general fund balance, which the money would be there. The total cost of going home a week with their children, state of the system, and utilities would be about twelve hundred dollars. I'm not sure that we can even bear it in, but we would wait to get a pool of affordable money. I don't know how you feel about it. We can wait until next year or I don't know this year and see next year, whatever.
Well, I think what determining factor is that gonna be is, they got vital statistic registration. And I guess there's a lot of things in this, in this brochure that Donna needs to be brought up to, to the-
It will make the job a little-
No, I mean, she is struggling with it and I mean, she's doing a fantastic job. Not, not to say that she's not. I don't mean to imply that. But I think to make her job easier, we need to give her the benefit of the school. We have a a good general fund balance. Again, I'm back to, to training and teaching people. It's an invaluable sort. I mean, we can't get enough of it to keep ourselves where we need to keep ourselves in today's world. I think my thought process is, and I spoke with Mrs. Dawson to budget both of them to go next year because they are the backbone to the village. Our correspondence and anything that can be done, they seem to do it for us. That's unquestioned. But I do believe that Donna shouldn't have to be penalized to wait one more year. She's been at the job now about a year and she took over and she's done well. But I think as, as a board, we need to give her a little bit more information that she's gonna need to make her job easier to do. I don't know what your opinion is, trustee McCallie, but-
My opinion is, I agree. I think that if she can get in this year, it's gonna make her job easier. And I hope we should do it. The way I look at it is that this money was budgeted last year for both of you to go. Use half of it. The rest probably went into the fund balance, which we'd be taking it from. So it's not like, it was budgeted last year and put in, you know, that half of that amount was put into the reserve. So I'd say if you get in, good.
Trustee Short. You have the board approval.
Okay, we have a motion that if we can, if we can get Donna in, if we commission a gold transfer approximately twelve hundred dollars from the fund balance to eight thirty-one ten point two, is the cost.
I think that will-
Motion trustee McCallie. Second trustee Connor. All in favor?
Aye.
Carry.
Yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the numbers. I should say, but the one we're always waiting to get at. The report of superintendent.
Do you have my written report? Do you have any questions on what I've given you? I already have the rest of the bones on.
Prepared run over signpost. I don't know if it's on top of the hill on Prospect, but there's a sign that's down. I don't know if that's a town sign or a village sign.
I don't know what it says.
I don't know. It stays down in the dirt. So.
What signs were?
The one we were saying.
Huh?
The ones we looked at. The Astro Park road. Somebody drove right off and took the arrow signs. Tell you where that curve is. You and I both looked at it.
The only thing I said that is because I was looking at that sign and I, and I don't know if maybe somebody could walk and, and just look and see, you know, what it is. I was in a hurry. I had to stop. I don't know, I'm short on time.
Anything else?
No, I think I don't have anything.
Is anybody else? I don't think there's anyone else. I have a note from Steve Bowman for wastewater plant. And he's requested to take five days from the tenth to the fourteenth of October. Has leave without pay. Says I have used most, if not all, of my vacation time for other, other than vacation, and I would like to take the vacation sparing the above mentioned time. It was dated twenty-six months.
That's in correspondence, right?
Oh.
Right. Okay, but but I think in in reading that, I believe he has spoke to you about it.
Let's say you have one end of question on the other side.
Well, my question was, do we have adequate coverage? And is it gonna be taking-
At that time, I don't think it's-
Taking away from another project or workman. That's my question.
At that time, I would say no. At that time, you couldn't. So I'll just try to schedule, that'll be during the pickup days and close to it. We schedule the pickup days the following week or following two weeks.
So it's like something that has to do-
Is it? Oh, you look it up. I'm gonna put it in my schedule.
I think we my opinion is I don't think we can make a practice of giving people time off, even if it is without pay, if they've already taken their vacation. You know, we don't wanna start doing this. I mean, if you feel that we can do it now and it's not gonna hurt us, I don't have a problem with it, but we should make a practice. I think this has been down at the bottom. Is it maybe not for weeks, probably a year later?
Yeah, it has been.
Yeah.
I think one of the things is that he's he's taking responsibility a lot for that, because it is a big meeting. This is some, some of the B M A.
Well, you know, and I sat here and I listened to, and I've listened to Francis and Francis is right. And I've listened to trustee Connor. And he's right. I think the bottom line is yourself. Now, if you can do without him for that five days, we, we don't intend to make your job any harder. That isn't what we're here for, but if you-
If we're a different time of year, I'd probably worry about, you know, in October, it's that's the, some things- Some things, most things slow up.
Things do happen. I can sympathize with this person. Okay, so I...
Barring any of the scene.
Yeah, and I mean, you know, and who can see that? I myself don't have a problem. I think Francis said it can happen.
If you don't have a problem with it. If you have no problem with it, I, you know, and you feel we can... If you're going to be off that time and he's going to be off at the same time.
It's the week before.
Okay. That couldn't be a problem.
Yeah, this is the week before Bob goes.
Right. Like I said, you know. Okay. We don't need to get labor, I guess.
No, no. Do we need a vote on this or just approve?
I can say this one, which allows me to do that day.
Right. Can anybody like to...
This is for... I don't know what it is. What I'm thinking is, the vacation that he approved runs through the end of June.
That's June first.
So he used all his vacation already. Why I'm asking, I mean, I just don't want to come back and say, well, gee, I want another week leave because I used all my vacation, say, come next March. That's all, I'm just thinking.
They didn't fix the legal.
I would have thought that would have been one of them.
Next five days.
That's exactly what I'm talking about. I don't want it to become a normal thing, especially a whole week off. I mean, it's kind of early, usually, our vacation up. If we, you know, the year runs through June, and that still leaves quite a long time remaining in the year.
Do you guys usually get an after-meet for the opposite reason?
Well, I'm just bringing up a point.
I know, I know, please.
We don't want people using all their vacation up, first opportunity they get, you know, beginning of year, and then say, well, I want to take another week. And that's what you're getting at.
Right. If they, you know, just because he can afford to take a week off with pay, shouldn't make that a normal thing. Because if we start doing this for him, then every other employee is going to ask the same thing.
Yeah, I'll take a week off for that thing.
Yeah. If they can afford it, I mean, and then how would we justify not giving it to him as we gave it to Steve? But I'm just thinking of him, you know, say, next March, if he had once another, because that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
And what's to prevent him from doing it again or whatever? I just don't want it to become a normal thing, and like I said, I don't care. If you can do without him for a week, that's fine. I just want to make it a no. It's not a normal practice, and I don't, and I think if we have to again, we need...
We discourage, we discourage the use of...
Right. We need to, if it happens again, we need to talk about it a little more. That's all.
So I believe this is the consensus of the board that we have this in motion. But yes, it's granted.
It's not to be a practice.
I'll make the motion to grant this week to Steve.
I got a second. Alligator. So apparently, Mr....
I made a note. I'll be committed as a number.
Okay. I mean, you know, we need to... Yes, because I'm sure that he has concerns, but we do as the people in the village. Okay. Anything else, Mr. Self?
No, I think that's about it. I think we've covered an awful lot of the... Anything else that I may...
Anything else for Mr. Persimond and Self?
Okay. Mr. Dawson, do we have correspondence, please?
I have one, and the agenda is seeking a correspondence from Prima, and I lost control of the direction.
Can I ask a question? Under this report, I'm assuming this is a report on the village itself, right? And we're at points earned is five twenty-five, which is greater than the five hundred, so we get full discount?
I got that because we made the cross to get the training going.
Right.
And actually doing it.
And the membership year is... How does that work? Is that for this budget year or for next budget year?
This is budget for the year, I think.
Okay, so it would be next year's budget that we have to see.
Item two is correspondence to Prima regarding a safety coordinator and committee. I think we discussed each of the items here on the... Item three is correspondence to Calasham Land, blessed with water service services, closed eleven through eleventh county district, and draft a recommended committee for Conroy and Conroy. Conroy, Dr. Bennington.
Make a suggestion that we discuss this at the end of our correspondence, both of our correspondence, just so we...
Yeah. Can you bring him back up?
Item four is thorough representation grant being a mixed part application. Insurance figures are much more insurance safety specific. Item five is information from New York State D E data regarding the pickup of the new urban community forested grant program. Item six is correspondence to the Shaysis Central Roll School District, accepting their rates from their forested and planned state across the road. Item seven is notice of back taxes due to equipment from the county, and it uses downtown buyout property. We've addressed that with our attorney.
We are working.
Item eight is information regarding community links. Item nine is correspondence to Governor's Apache regarding school board recognition rate. Item ten is correspondence to the F W close fourteen eighteen regarding tomorrow's tour at ten to eleven at eight a.m. Item eleven of the town water sewer, water sewer maintenance agreement, are you ready?
I noticed you had circled and indicated the changes from last year's contract to this year's, and some change you noted. I didn't see any additional, but are these changes going to be brought back to the town? Or are the days for incorrect and that type of stuff?
They've signed it, but there are changes, so I would assume we put it, rewrite it. I think we've got that on the system, and just make the changes and bring it back.
Right. All right. For, I sign it, right?
Item twelve is application of courses with also direct. Item thirteen is a two piece of correspondence by S O relative to our father refreshing the literary services.
How... Question, how is this rating compared to previous year ratings? Does anybody see enough?
It's been a long time since I was there. It was the last time before I ever bought it. I don't really remember.
It's why I asked, because it's low, that's all. The rating's low.
Well, they classify some of it as class A, class B. And we see that in the next one.
Oh. I guess is or will be, and this isn't anything really brushwork, but well, some of it may, but a lot of it has to do with fire district itself, sort of equipment, personnel, that type of thing.
Right.
Some of that had to...
Even with the county. Some deals with the county.
Some deals with closing force.
Because all I can remember is when I was in the fire department, when they did that before. Now, that's quite a long, that's quite a long one. I don't ever remember it at all. I mean, I wasn't in a place where I would have got that. But apparently, they're happy with it, because what they're seeing is a backside remarks, A, B, B and C and A and C.
I guess this one doesn't have to be...
I was just questioning what we're seeing. It's not a low side, that's all. I guess it's something that maybe things need to be addressed in all parties involved at some point.
That makes the out, if that is a concern.
The single thing we can do, both the only thing we really can do would be to roll a big tank. That would make that backdoor happen.
Unless you get an awful lot of grain. Something that's being looked at.
Mr. Dawson?
Item fourteen is a vacation in the county office in the eighties in the summer period. Item fifteen is correspondence to Governor's Happy, the first of the year, December eleventh. And correspondence to time there, updating the boards on there, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Now, would you like to readdress...
Yeah, I think we can go back to item number three in correspondence. We have a lot of information that we received over a short period of time that we need to review and become familiar with. And with the presentation this evening from the Dory First, I think it gives us a little more knowledge of what we needed to know. I think myself as well, and I'm sure everybody else, biggest issue is the cost. And I know the village certainly wants to supply water, at least in the river. It's just one item, and it's a cost. You know, I think that's probably what we need to review, discuss.
Because I thought the cost was kind of high on the proposal from Conroy and Conroy. Thought that's small compared to these.
But he also said that...
They're using thirty dollars.
Thirty-dollar linear foot. What that came out to, I think if you use the figure that was given to us, the twenty-three eighty-two per foot given to us by Conroy and Conroy for instance, option three, for the cost of those one, it's three hundred and ninety feet, which is just the portion that goes from the long side pocket drive.
Right. It goes through the down line.
Two eleven. Using the figures, the three hundred... Or you got three hundred and ninety feet at twenty-three eighty-two, I think it came out to like eighty-nine thirty-two fifty.
Now, one of the things that you have to look at is if you use the side, the side of pocket drive that goes to the east, you have two driveways to cut across. If you use the one to the west, the twelve-inch line, you only have, you have the street cut. Either way, it's going to be either cut across or bore. Something to think about.
You're talking option one versus option three?
I'm talking about another one altogether, different than what was there. That was the twelve-inch line was on the east side, the same side, the west side, same side as the height, which gives you a twelve-inch thing to supply the district that was close to the median. That's something perhaps somebody needs to look at. I don't know. But just another.
But I'm just looking at the options that they have, because if we don't have any options, dollar cost other than the original, which isn't viable at this point.
Correct. Right.
I mean, that's, these are the only figures we have to look at that are down a paper.
Because what you spoke about, it is no longer existing.
No, the distance is, the same distance.
Well, I think...
We're probably looking at nine thousand dollars now. I don't know, that's using the dollar figure that Conroy and Conroy has given us per foot. Is that including us doing some of the work? How does that work?
That was intended, the way Palmer did it, is we would do the landscape restoration. If you do it on the, as I said, if you do it on the east side, you get two driveways, two accesses to go across. One is the trucking way into the back of Ariatik, and the other will be into the parking side without a bore. And that cost, that restoration would be considered. And it would also be a very tough kind of year.
Well, either way, if you've got to cut across the street, that's still going to cost a bit. Even bore, I mean, bore is going to need more money than cutting.
I don't know. I don't know if bore would be, I'd like to, I'd like to bore that, see whether that would bring it. But I'm sure somebody has a number.
See, well, this is our final on this as far as...
Well, they're pushing, I believe.
Oh, yeah. Well, this should have been all dealt with last December, January, February, not at this point.
Yeah. I know. But again, I need to, I think they need to... See, we're looking eight inch, and you're saying twelve inch.
Can you show us on this map what you're talking about?
Sure. I think so.
Because I might not be able to. I don't think you want that part of it.
Well, what I'm looking at is what are their proposals down the road? Do we want to go with a twelve inch main instead of an eight?
Here's the, here's what they propose to do.
Right. We have a fire hydrant right about here. That ends that twelve-inch line that is supposed to be...
That's on the east side.
That's on the west side.
West side.
West side.
Right.
Now, it's here. That's all I can do. And then bring twelve inch.
So where would we be coming into what road?
We would, someone else would.
Someone else would, okay.
So your proposal is right here, from the twelve inch, right to there, twelve inch. Because my thought is, and I think everybody else is here, is what eventually is going to conspire there. But it's not only there. If you put, if you put a water main to right here, what's going to happen over here? They'll be able to pick up the other side of the road.
Yes, they will. And if you bring a twelve inch main, you'll be able to supply it if you bring an eight inch main to the left.
See, that's, see, that's the consideration that I'm looking at. Now, we're talking eight inch to twelve inch main. What, what are their plans down the future? Because if we put an eight inch, an eight inch is going to be sufficient for what they want to do in the future. Why not, while we're doing it, put twelve inch in and, and govern and, and say to them, "This will take what you're going to do in the future"?
If they want to run eight on the town property lease, what? That will be this.
But you can't go eight and then try and pick up twelve after that.
No, 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 it doesn't work that way. But if you run twelve and you want to split it off into two eights, you're in pretty good shape.
Right. I think that's a good idea.
See, I think that's, and I know they're, they're wanting to push it, but again, we as board members have to look at the taxpayers' money and, and what we're initially going to put into this.
I mean, we still don't have a, if that's another alternative, we don't have a cost figure for that. We can't make a decision until we have that figure.
Right, that's what I'm getting at.
If it takes coming back at a special meeting or something like that, so be it.
Right, that was what I thought today. If we need to, to call a special meeting, come back for just a, for, uh, for, uh, purpose of, uh, water district, uh, we can do that, but I feel it's hard for us to make a decision without actually having a dollar and setting them out.
And I would think if we had another meeting, that maybe somebody from the town...
They should be here.
Are you fully expected to, whether they're going to be able to make...
Right, me too. Uh, since it's ending on... You know, I, I... I think we need to get more information before we can actually do this. And if we need to call a special meeting, we'll call a special meeting, but we'll do that. Until we can get more figures, I, I have a hard time making a, a decision on that. Same thing with a resolution to supply them with water. If we make a resolution stating we will do that, and we will have to be committed to do it at, at whatever expense it incurs. And I really don't want to do that either. So, it all depends on what figures come back within what we decide.
Yeah, I think that's something you're going to have to get from the hour figures for, uh, and I guess as soon as possible.
ASAP, and see if you can get down...
To go back to the twelve inch road?
Yes.
Only to the distance that I set.
Right.
Yep, yep.
And then I have to think...
The difference will be minimal.
But still, we need those figures.
And we need those figures, and we need to say, okay, we will go this far with twelve inch.
I guess we're, we're trying to, we don't want to surprise it.
Well, because it'd nothing but surprise you, I don't know why, you know?
Well, yeah, but we, you know...
We're talking, I, I had a figure of four hundred and thirteen. And I can't believe that it's going to be eight twelve as a football and putting it in...
Well, I, I don't, I don't want to guess that. I want, I don't want to...
No, I don't.
I don't want, you know, we're just trying to cipher it out now and say, well, it's going to be this much.
No, no.
I, I need figures on paper.
Well, you, you need a, really, when you come down to that, I can give you a guessing of what a contractor is going to give you. The hard number. No, he, he can give you a number. A contract to us.
That's what I would expect you to get from a contract.
Okay, well, that should be set up through Conroy and Conroy then.
Okay.
Okay, and I think you need to go to the, the town stating, uh, what our proposal is to come from Heisman to Route eleven and then pick it from there. And they will have to evaluate their cost from there.
I need to verify that's...
Right. So I, I think the board agrees on that. So that's where we stand with that, as soon as that information is available. If we need to, we will call a special meeting. And invite the appropriate people to it. Okay. Thank you, okay. On to old business. I believe at the last board meeting, I asked if anybody was interested in joining the zoning board. Asking again if anybody would be interested in being on the zoning board. Would they please call the village office? Thank you. Uh, number two, real property tax exemption for first time. Uh, home buyers. This has gone to the attorney for the legal part of it. We'll be waiting for his recommendation on this tax exemption. I believe that's where we are, right, Mrs. Dawson?
Yeah, the, the new section of real property law and research and...
Okay, right, because there was a question on real property. Thank you. Uh, zoning law amendments. Apparently, there's been some hard work done on this. But I believe they're being looked at to make sure that they conform to the original zoning laws that were instituted in this village. Is there any estimated, uh, time of when this may be done? Do you know, Mrs. Dawson?
You should have paid to work on this thing on the next meeting.
Okay. Right, okay.
Okay, this is reference to Dr. Land?
Okay, Dr. Land's proposal.
So we really have anything, you know, correspondence or anything, or any information?
No.
This is just something...
Right.
That's what I thought, but I wasn't sure.
Right.
Because I saw this other thing.
Right.
Zoning, some county planning board.
No, that was just our, uh, they're just being looked at. Number four, an old business. I think we have correspondence on that. Uh, Donnie Fanyell Culbert request.
Somebody was supposed to look at it?
I think there's...
Somebody from the street, street lady.
Yeah, we'll be getting it from you.
Okay, I think this, because we have a formal, uh, request. We request a child to be placed under driveway lot number ten in, uh, Donnie Fanyell's mobile home park. That was a written request. Uh, there's information that, uh, can go with this. I would like streets to, to investigate this before we, uh, make a decision on that. I think all pertinent information should be good. I think you have a copy. Okay, I would, uh, like to see what, what they come back with on recommendations. Is there any other old business that needs to come before the board? Okay, on to new business. Anybody have any new business that come before the board to see?
I guess something that kind of was, uh, a little bit too earlier as far as village pickup days.
Mm-hmm.
We're in September, and usually we have those prior to Halloween in October. So I guess we need to set up some days to pick up leaves and...
We usually do that on a Tuesday.
Do that Tuesday. So Halloween is on the third first this year.
So that's...
We probably want to go to late in October, right?
Well, yeah, if, if you do anything before October eleventh, twelfth, the leaves are still on the tree.
October twenty-ninth, which is two days before Halloween.
Right.
Okay. You said, what, what date?
October twenty-ninth.
For one day. And you want to go...
In the week early.
You want to go week early, the twenty-second.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, what we normally do is it ends up being two installments. Most people don't get everything done, you know, for a shot.
Oh, I don't have a plan, but...
The leaves, yeah, and the leaves don't always come down like they do.
Sometimes we actually have a third one depending on what...
Right, because I think last year it was late in November.
If that's necessary, do that, so...
So we're going to have pickup date to October twenty-second. And a second, October twenty-ninth. Do we need a motion to that?
No.
Is that it for, uh, all of the new business? Do we have to have a presentation in the morning?
Now, one else to add is we have a total of a gallon upon a thirty-six thousand seven hundred fourteen dollars and fifty-five cents. And a, um, a water account, we have one thousand five hundred ninety dollars in maintenance, and two with five thousand nine hundred and ten dollars.
So could I get a motion to pay the bills? Motion trustee Goner, second trustee Short, all in favor? At this time, would there be any more business to come before this board? Uh, could I get a, a motion and a second for adjournment? Motion for adjournment, trustee Short, second trustee Goner, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned.